Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the Village of Westmont Committee of the Hall meeting for May 2nd, 2013. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Sinica.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Staff Accountant Carlson.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler.
Here.
Trustee-elect Addington.
Here.
And trustee-elect Parker.
Here.
And I don't think I missed anybody.
Great. Thank you. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up under reports, on Monday, we will have a very important and exciting board meeting. We'll be bidding farewell to some of our board members and welcoming new trustee elects and a mayor elect. So that will take place on Monday. And I just wanted to mention also that this Saturday, the Knights of Columbus at 25 North Cass will be celebrating Cinco de Mayo. They'll have an all-you-can-eat taco bar from 5:00 to 8:00 for $10 a person. And it's less for children, but I don't remember exactly what that is. So it's a great family night. If you get a chance to go over there, it would be wonderful. And that's all I have. Burke.
First of all, I want to tell all the trustees sitting here that I placed the minutes from the budget meetings there. I would like to add them to the agenda for Monday night to vote on. So Pat, I'm depending on you to look them over and call me if you find anything. Secondly, I would like to call an executive session just to review and release the last five or six, or not release, review and accept the last six executive sessions. That, and it seemed like I had something else, but I can't remember who it is right now.
We can circle back.
Yes, you can.
Attorneys Zemanek.
Thanks. I passed out tonight and emailed earlier and requested to add something to the agenda. It's declaring an old well structure as surplus property. This is well site number nine. The well has been pulled and is out of service. There's just the structure remaining. It's located on Fritz Werly Park. The park district would like to take over ownership of that structure because they use it as a picnic shelter and some locked storage. The village has no need for it anymore. So with your permission, add this to the agenda and we would transfer ownership to the park district of that structure by a bill of sale for $1. Otherwise, it would be raised by the village.
Just a quick procedural question. Will that then be old business or new business?
New business.
So the new board will vote on that?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
The clerk has remembered.
I did. Jimmy's Island Grill is opening tomorrow night, and I was there last night for preview. Wonderful food, everyone. So if you're going out to eat, stop in at Jimmy's because he has great food. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Manager Cyril.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I want to mention. We are scheduling a special community meeting for May 22nd at 7:00 PM to review the recent flood incident. We are inviting representatives from a variety of different bodies, including the different sanitary districts, Commonwealth Edison. We're going to be making a presentation on our own recent stormwater study and giving as much up-to-date information as we have at that point in time regarding the evaluation being done by the state and by FEMA. They've been out in the county this week, and they've been reviewing various communities. And I understand that they finished up a phase of that work today, and they'll probably be back next week to do some more evaluation. So that'll be May 22nd, Wednesday at 7:00 PM here at the village hall. I also wanted to add to the executive session request, discussion regarding threat litigation and pending litigation. And I wanted to mention that finance ordinance number one, which is not 25 as it says on the agenda, is in the amount of $1,320,760.59. So that was a correction that will be made for Monday evening. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Seems the clerk has another thing.
I'm sorry. I did not see trustee-elect Barry walk in. So he is here, too.
Thank you. Trustee items. Trustee Emory.
Well, you give her a lifetime appointment, and she takes full advantage of it.
She'll probably interrupt you with one more thing.
No, I really don't.
Well, for three of us, it's our last committee of the hall where we get to discuss stuff, and then we get to turn things over to three new trustees. And I'm hoping I get a boatload of really tough emails so that I can just put them in the inbox in there. And good luck. But anyway, I do want to thank all the people that, after the rain, there was a call to arms to get the information out in extremely short order about what the county was doing in order to determine about, you know, asking various entities for flood assistance and all that. And it was, the way that it went was just by chain, and everybody came out of the woodwork. And it never ceases to amaze me, the volunteers in this town that will drop everything and not only, you know, stuff 7,000 bags, but then put on their glow-in-the-dark vests and buddy team and get them all delivered. So I want to thank everybody, as always, because they just always rally to the call, and it just never ceases to amaze me.
Thank you. I think we had over, what, 30 or 35 people that participated.
Mm-hmm. That's all I have. Anything else? Trustee Scott.
Just going to ask what she said about the volunteers. Thank you to everyone. And that's it. Thank you.
Trustee Fleming.
Nothing to know.
Trustee Klebeneau.
Just to remind people that a week from tomorrow is our electronic recycling.
Very first one?
And, yeah, Friday, the 10th. And it's from, what, 7:00 to, I believe, what, 1:00 or something?
I believe so.
Okay. And again, yes, thanks to the volunteers. Staff did a great job. They had just hours to figure out how they were going to get this notice out to everybody. There was a meeting in the back room, and they were trying to figure out, what do we do? And then finally, a flyer, what do we say in it to get the people, the fewer words the better, to let them know what's happening. And then a call went out to the, all the volunteers, fire police, you know, EMA, plus staff on the next day volunteered some of their time, too, to help get it out and hit all the homes in here. And the results really showed well. So I think everybody for turning them in. They don't realize how important those items were to get turned in because they needed them for the PDAs, the damage assessments that they're doing right now this week. They're pulling together.
And the results were, what, 392?
Over 400.
Over 400?
We've continued to encourage people to fill them out. And I should thank trustee Klebeneau for her time. She came in and happened to be here that day and was based on her second job. With FEMA, was giving us kind of a background on how FEMA works and what to expect in the process. So that was very useful and valuable to our staff, and thank you for that.
I hope so. I hope so. But now we just have to wait and see about the declaration. And you guys will know my text message will go off. It doesn't tell me what state. It was so funny. I was at the bank, and I'm talking with a teller, and my text messaging goes off. And I'm thinking, it's too early for Illinois, you know? I mean, they're still doing PDAs. And I go, I got to go home and get to a computer. And I go rushing home and find out, you know, Kansas got declared for a snowstorm, North Dakota got declared a few hours later for this, and I'm still waiting for Illinois. Chances of me working in Illinois will be slim. They don't let you really work around your home. But I'm still waiting for it to come in. So any time staff has any questions, they're welcome to call me if they get some unusual questions on the phone, and maybe I can help answer it for them.
Thank you.
At least on individual assistance. It's public assistance.
Any unusual question?
According to the flooding and FEMA.
Related to flooding, okay.
Yes, that'll help. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
I have nothing to know. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on. Is there anything to be removed from the consent agenda this evening? I would just request that on Monday, the two proclamations, that we not remove them, but we simply read them on Monday.
Absolutely.
Okay. Moving on, public hearing. Proposed Central Business District Tiff public hearing. Board to conduct a public hearing for the proposed Central Business District Tiff, Increment Finance District. Manager Cyril.
Just wanted to state that the joint review board that's required by statute met last Friday and did take action, and the vote was 5-1 in favor of recommending the creation of the Central Business District Tiff, with school district 201 that voted against it. However, we're asking this evening that we continue the public hearing because we are in conversations with district 201 to try to address some of their concerns. So based upon that, we were hoping that we would postpone that to the 20th, and then at that point, do formal presentations and have public input at that point.
Right. Thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Emory.
Second.
Here on.
And then a motion to continue to May 20th.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
So the people that showed up here tonight, will they be allowed to talk?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely, on May 20th.
Okay. And that's why you're not getting a motion.
Absolutely.
So just so everyone's clear, the intention is there's not going to be any presentation by the village tonight, no public testimony, no staff comments, and everything regarding the public hearing will be held on May 20th. And everyone's comments are welcome then.
Well, we want people that showed up specifically to talk about the Tiff to be able to talk about it tonight. I don't know if you want to convert that into an open forum type of session because it's not technically part of the hearing. But what I would like is that we don't, we've moved to open the hearing, we hear what they have to say, and then we move to continue it.
So, and that's, obviously, that's up to the board to decide how they want to proceed, and that's fine. This arose with the Southwestmont Business Tiff district also. We were in discussions with one of the school districts. We wanted to try and resolve that first. And there is some concern about allowing public comments before we even had our consultant here to explain what a Tiff is, what this district, what it consists of, what the boundaries. And our consultant is not here tonight based on the intention to continue the public hearing. So you still can hear from the residents if you want, but one concern is, you know, they may not get the full advantage of hearing what the presentation is.
I'm fine with that because they've made the trip here, and they ought to be able to say what they want to say. And obviously, we know if there is something that they've misunderstood about what, you know, tax increment financing is and all that, it'll be explained. But I don't want to turn people away and just go, hey, sorry, you know, we're trying to work it out with 201, and we're going to continue to do that. But I want to hear what the people have to say, and because they came here to talk about it. So I don't know what you guys think.
I would have to concur with that. I mean, they've taken time out of their evening to be here. And I mean, we obviously were not able to let people know that we were going to postpone this.
We did try to put a press release up as quickly as we could, just like we did in the marker situation.
And, you know, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. But, I mean, we have people here tonight that have specifically taken time out of their evenings to come here to speak.
And I'm...
Whether or not it's fully understood what it is or not, they then can come back on the 20th. They can hear the presentation or watch it live on television and understand it anymore. And any questions that they may have between then, between now and the 20th, may get answered for them. But I think it would only be appropriate...
I mean, clearly, we can't answer questions and go into all that, but I think we can hear opinions.
Right.
And we can also hear questions and just note them and make sure the consultant, that we are ready to answer them on the 20th.
Right.
That'll speed things up.
Would give the consultant some...
On the 20th.
Mr. Zemanek, could you keep us on the straight and narrow to keep us out of trouble when they ask the questions, so we...
Sure. If you're able to answer them, great. If not, then you can, at least as trustee Emory pointed out, use this as an information gathering session and forward, you know, we'll take notes of everyone's questions and have them answered, if nothing else, on the 20th.
I think since 99% of the times, this village room here, our boardroom, is empty. The fact that we have all these people here tonight, it'd be a shame if we didn't hear them.
Does everyone concur?
It was me.
Okay. Since this is definitely taking a different path than we took with the Southwestmont, I would just make a recommendation to open up the floor first to district 201 in the event they had any comments they'd like to make. Feel free.
Likewise, you know, they didn't bring their experts this evening either.
Right. I don't have ours. It's like, you know... The floor is open for them to comment and, you know, all that. But certainly, don't feel pressured that everybody wants to know what position you're taking now and all that. You don't have to do that. That can all wait.
Hi. I would state that at this point...
Do introduce yourself for the folks that don't live in 201.
I'm Marie Charlton, President of CUST 201 Board of Education. And I would just like to state that on May 20th, we will be here with our experts and such things to present our position at this point on the Tiff district. We respect, we respectfully hope that we can come up with an agreement between now and then. So we would say that at this point, we are not prepared to make any kind of statement. However, we are working on doing that for May 20th.
Right. Thank you. And again, because this is sort of taking a different path than we've taken in the past, I just wanted to be sure that you've had an opportunity to state that. And we're working very hard together, and we will come up with a resolution. At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment on the Tiff?
I have a question.
If you'd just come up to the podium and state your name and answer this.
Joe Steger from 126 South Wilmette. Does this kind of cost me any more? I'm right outside the Tiff district you're proposing. Will it raise my taxes? Or what they say? I mean, where does the money come from? Just here and it stays right here?
Well, that's part of how the whole Tiff works, and I'm going to let the attorney cover that because...
So establishing a Tiff district is a redevelopment tool where your taxes, you'll continue to be taxed as normal and continue to...
So it won't increase my taxes?
Your taxes. The village does not assess any additional taxes on residents or property owners. What happens is taxes are frozen, and as taxes increase, the village receives the incremental increase and can use that for redevelopment purposes. What other taxing bodies do is the potential that they can increase their tax rate because they are receiving less tax dollars. That is always a potential. But in general, Tiffs do not result in, certainly not municipal or county taxes to you. It could result potentially in a different tax rate from different taxing bodies.
So the village isn't going to tax for anyone?
Correct.
Right. Right. And the hope would be that at the end of the Tiff or during the process of the Tiff, as development comes in and we have wildly successful retail businesses, your home properties will actually go up and have more value. That would be the hope.
If it gets more taxes, the value will not...
Price of a bag is. Anybody else? Okay, well, oh, come on up.
Well, that was successful.
You got a second?
We have one more. Thank you. And your name?
My name's Jeff Clay, and I have building on 203. Now, what does this have to do with the business owners downtown? Is this increase, or is this going to change the value or tear up the streets for two years, or, you know, where we can't have businesses anymore here?
I mean, one of the goals is to do an analysis of needed infrastructure improvements and use this as a funding source to make necessary improvements, whether it's sewer lines, water lines, street improvements, things like that, to beautify the downtown, which adds value to business owners' property. I don't know that, well, I'm sure we don't have any specific public works improvement projects on slate yet, but that's something that's going to be analyzed. What are the needs? And what can we do that will attract businesses to come downtown?
But what is the duration of that? Do you have any idea?
It's a 23-year term for the Tiff.
I see. So you mean that's 23 years of construction left to deal with?
No.
No, not necessarily. In actuality, probably unless things really go at a quick rate, I don't think that you're really going to see any major changes for at least two to three years.
And this...
Before it really, before it really even takes hold. But what it does is there are a lot of developers and people out there, and the residents of our town have asked, you know, let's do something with the downtown. We want to see more businesses, whatever. Well, when a Tiff goes into place, there are developers and builders that sit and watch and wait for these things. And these are large, large companies. What they do then is they go in, and in some cases, they'll buy several pieces of property.
I see.
And they will either infill or, you know, rehab what's there. It just all depends on how the village decides if they want to put a preservation ordinance into place to protect some of the buildings of the downtown district. That's going to be up to the future board. But it's not a case that this is going to happen overnight. It's a long-term project. And...
And I think when our consultant is here on Monday, he's the true expert on Tiffs. And this is, we're learning as we go. It's a very complicated process. He will give, you know, a very understandable overview of what it means to, or could potentially mean to current business owners and to builders. And, you know, as trustee Fleming says, it doesn't happen overnight, and that's why the duration is so long, is we build these funds to be able to use for different improvements, different incentives, to, you know, get business to come into town and to basically improve the downtown.
I see.
So it could be a very, very good thing for your business, and I hope that it will be.
And I can say this, on the 20th, my better half and I will be here as citizens because we have a business in the downtown district. So we'll be here on the 20th to speak.
I think if you hear the names, Downers Grove.
LaGrange.
LaGrange, Lombard, Elmhurst. Those towns all had downtowns that were in need of repair like ours is. If you drive through any of those towns today, you'll see tremendous difference. That's what Tiff can do. Without Tiff, it doesn't happen. And so, you know, the number one, the thing that people want in this town is they want change, they want the downtown to look nicer and be more progressive and have more businesses. It'll never happen without the Tiff.
I think we did improve it quite a bit.
We have, but there's still a long way to go, though.
The point is, is that it gives builders, developers, and people who want to rehab even what they have, it gives them financial incentives to do so. So it makes it easier for it to happen. And it's 23 years in which the Illinois legislature allows those financial incentives in that defined boundary.
I see.
That's, that is, they shouldn't have called it Tiff. They should have called it Kickstarts.
I see.
Yeah.
So is that like facade improvements and things like that? Is that what they're trying to do, or...
Well, actually, we already have a facade grant program in place with the village.
I know, I know. But I was just saying, is that carry it further or something?
It's definitely multifaceted, and part of it could be to simply beautify some of the buildings that are already there.
I see.
Or simply, in some cases sadly, just get them up to code.
I see.
You know?
Or take them down.
Or take them down, you know, whatever it is.
There are some that it will be, you know, you can tell by looking at them, it's going to cost too much than what they're worth to rehab them and to make them attractive to both people running a business as well as people looking to shop somewhere. So those are the ones that, you know, when a developer gets a financial incentive to tear it down and rebuild something that will fit with whatever the new board decides, whether they want it to have that old town feel, whether they want it modernized, whether they want it, you know, 50s and not 1890s. That gives them money to do it.
One thing to point out that it doesn't mean is that the village comes in and starts seizing properties.
No.
We do not do that.
If a developer reaches a deal with a private property owner, that's between you two, and then the village assists with redevelopment. But the village doesn't come in and kick out property owners and take their property.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Hope you'll be back on the 20th. Any other questions or comments from the public?
Hi. My name is Norman Chimenti. The last name is spelled C-H-I-M-E-N-T-I. My wife and I, my wife is also present tonight, are residents of the community at 28 South Grant, just south of here. We have corresponded previously with, by email, with trustees Scott and Community Development Director Malik regarding some concerns we have as nearby residents, and would like to make a presentation to you on the 20th. Just thought we would announce our presence tonight. Our preference would be to wait until after the formal presentation and the information that is presented there because it might answer some of our questions. And we would also like it on the 20th to make part of the public hearing record hard copies of our previous exchanges of email correspondence with representatives of the village. And we thank you for that opportunity. We wouldn't have approached tonight but for the fact that others did so, and you were gracious enough to extend that invitation. And we'll be back on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Well, if you're getting all this money, you're giving to Joe Steger from 126 South Wilmette. If you're getting all this money that you're giving to developers, how are you paying the village employees if you're taking the money that's from the one district? You're not increasing, if you're not increasing my taxes, you're giving developers money that could be millions of dollars?
It's not, see, and this is why really, when, I think when the Tiff expert is here and he explains a little bit more, it's not like this money that's coming in is going only to developers. It can be used for a multitude of...
Well, I understand. You're improving the downtown.
It's not coming out of the village general fund either.
But you're getting X amount of money for expenses. You're giving the money away to somebody else.
I don't mean disrespect, but you're starting at square one.
Yeah, okay.
So you need to hear the whole presentation. You really do.
Yeah, it's very complicated, but...
It will explain it, and you, what you think, you know, is going to happen is not at all.
I mean, I'm in the mountain. I'm actually in the Tiff district. My business, I know they've given it to developers and stuff, and I just, you know, you're giving out money. I'm making sure I'm not getting screwed somewhere along the line.
Come back on the 20th, and you'll hear it.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Hi, my name is Chanel Robinson. My husband and I just bought property at 250 North Linden, so we, you know, we're new to the area. Just want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to talk tonight because we did take time out of our schedule to come, so I appreciate it. But just a general question, and I think you answered it a little bit. We're just curious to know what's going to happen to our home, you know, because, you know, we looked at the map in detail that you guys provided, and, you know, we see not homes there, but multi-residential, you know, buildings, you know? And I know you said that the city isn't going to come in and seize. So how, I'm just curious to know, how do you plan to execute that plan of not having homes on that street and putting what's supposed to be on that map in that street? Like, how does that work?
So we have...
The map, the map is only maybe a guideline. It might be a case that not one house gets disturbed at all. If a developer were to come in and talk to separate residents, that would be up to a developer. That would be up to you if they would come and talk to you. But, I mean, it's just...
Can I just clarify your address? Did you say Linden or Lincoln?
North Linden.
Linden. So I, you're not really in the Tiff area, per se.
The backyard.
But because you live within a certain amount of feet from, you know, that's why you got the letter in the mail and...
Isn't it 1,200 feet?
I think it's, is it 1,250?
Looking at the map...
There would be a lot of people that got the notice because 1,200 feet takes it, you know?
So your property is not in the Tiff district. You just got notified.
I could look at it more closely. But I mean, from what we could see, it was like that street was included. But, I mean, I, I don't know.
That being said, let's say it is included.
Yeah, even if...
No, there are, the village does not have power to come in and just seize your property and turn it over to a developer. A developer could approach you and your neighbors and say, hey, I'd like to put a multifamily development up here. But you're not obligated to sell. And we don't know that that's going to happen, and we've not been approached by any developers who said they're going to do that. In fact, I'd be surprised if Linden or blocks included in the Tiff. And I apologize, our expert's not here. He'll be able to answer that right away for you.
And plus, it's still, it doesn't... And plus, it's still, it doesn't, based on what you said, just so that nobody misinterprets it, that it's not a free-for-all on zoning. It doesn't change the zoning, you know?
Right. So a business can't get plopped down in the middle of a residentially zoned district?
Okay. All right, I think that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome, by the way. Yes.
Hi, I'm Tom Makey. I'm at 32 North Linden Avenue. If you're not familiar, directly behind Uncle John's music. I invite all the trustees to drive down our alley, especially the new ones. I voted for all three, by the way. So it basically is a minefield of potholes. And I'm betting it's the same way on the other side of Cass Avenue as well. I don't know if the alleyways will be covered under TIF money, being that the businesses do use those. We have a number of delivery trucks that go up and down for Amber for the Knights of Columbus, the new restaurant going into where the Petite Suite is. I'm sure we'll be getting much traffic as well. It's an awful alleyway. It needs help. I heard when we first built our home there that there was a supposed five-year plan to improve all the alleyways along the downtown area with supposedly an inverted crown and new sewage and drainage and all that stuff. Whether or not that's still in play or even was ever in play, I do not know. So that was my concern this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion.
Close, and let's do a motion to continue the public hearing until May 20th.
Right.
So moved, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Trustee Emory.
Yes.
Trustee Clubenow. Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Your pro temp, Seneca.
Yes.
We'll give the room a few minutes to clear. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Number one, board to hear a presentation by Finance Director Parker reviewing the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Number two, board to consider a resolution to adapt the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget.
Good evening. Wanted to sort of start off with a brief discussion about the budget schedule and sort of the amount of time that was put into this. I know we're sort of summing everything up in a very brief presentation today, but wanted to make sure everyone's aware, the public's aware, that the preparation for this budget started as early as November when staff began preparing the draft budget. So staff worked on that from November all the way through April. And then in April, the board attended several budget workshops and put in a lot of time and a lot of effort into those where they discussed and did budget in a great amount of detail. We're now at the point where we're at the committee of the whole. And then it's anticipated that the board will approve the budget on Monday, the 6th. And then the last part of the process is an appropriations ordinance, which has to be adopted by July. So just to sort of summarize everything, at the beginning of the process, as the public's aware, initially, there was discussion about potential loss of home rule revenue of about 2.4 million. And to offset that, there were some economic increases, revenue that increased due simply to the improved economy, such as increases in sales tax, a little bit of increase in income tax. And then there was also the increase that came as a result of the inflationary increase that comes to property taxes. Additionally, there was the increase in fire fees to leave a net revenue impact of about $1 million that we were looking at and working with at the beginning of this budget process. Currently, the general fund is at a point where we are looking at 2.6 million in revenues and about 2.6 million in expenses with a net surplus of about $4,000. And the general fund is the major operating fund of the village. This is where the village funds items such as police, public works, fire, general administration. All of the types of services are primarily funded from the general fund. This is a list that goes through sort of some general categories of cuts that were adopted in the budget. Wanted to highlight some of the top ones because they will have some potential impact on residents. So first of all, there was the change in the brush pickup program. As many people are aware, with the loss of home rule, with looking at that deficit that we're potentially having to work with, the brush pickup program was postponed until additional consideration could be given through the budget process. And it was determined through the budget process that we'll be able to continue the program, but that it will be reduced to two pickups per year for each household. So that generates a savings of about $58,000 for the village to make that change. The next item on the list is a reduction in costs associated with board meetings. The budget calls for a potential change in the board meeting structure to combining some board meetings, which would save about $27,000, almost $28,000. There's about $111,000 savings in tree and infrastructure maintenance reductions, some, a little bit reduction in things such as street sweeping, some reductions in some, you know, general right-of-way maintenance grading, as well as a change in the size of the trees that we purchased. We were able to save some money by purchasing a little bit smaller trees. Additionally, the police department hours will be shifting to be, they'll be open from 9:00 to 5:00. Now, currently, they're open through, till 8:00 in the evening. And so that'll be shifting till 5:00. And that generates a savings of almost $50,000.
The PD, the brick-and-mortar building, that's not officers on the street.
Yes, absolutely.
Just so everybody knows.
They're all going home at 5:00.
Yes, very true. It's the opportunity for the, yes, yep. Thank you for that clarification. Then there's several other items here. There's reimbursements of about $127,000. Majority of these reimbursements are anticipated being reimbursed through the Convention Tourism Fund, which is the fund where hotel motel taxes are now going. And so we'll be able to reimburse predominantly through there. There's a few other entities that have agreed to provide some additional reimbursements to the village to help cover some of our costs for community events. And then there's several different other items that are listed there as sort of general categories that were savings. There are some savings that were already underway, some reductions in one-time expenditures, some attrition where maintaining vacancies are only filling with part-time instead of full-time positions. There's about $107,000 worth of minimal impact to services. The vast majority of this is a reduction in the cost that we're paying for salt this year because the last couple of years have been very mild winters. We have a large supply of salt. We don't need to purchase as much. That's the majority of that item. We're also extending the life of our, the expected life of our vehicles. We set aside some money each year to fund vehicles as they come due for replacement by extending some of our assumptions. We're able to save a little bit of money each year as well. Some other items I wanted to mention, some on the increase side. We're looking at an increase of about $69,000 of the budget that's just due to grants. So it's an increase in revenues as well as expenditures. Looking at adding some additional code enforcement staff. That was a high priority of the budget during, of the board during the budget. So we're looking at adding costs for that. There's some IT infrastructure replacement that's been needed, that we've needed for the last several years. Been postponed several years. We're going to make those purchases at this time for about $70,000 worth of increases. And then there's the village-wide impacts that don't specifically fit in any department. These things include negotiated increases, sort of agreed-upon increases that have already been agreed for, you know, with union contracts and personnel salary increases. It also includes the increase in health insurance, which we all face. And then the restoration of the 40-hour work week. As the boards are aware, and as many people are probably aware, several years ago, the village was forced to make a reduction in the work week so that village employees were only working 39 hours a week and only providing 39 hours a week of the service to the residents. We're excited. We're at a point where we can increase that to 40 hours. We're able to provide that additional hour a week per individual of service to those residents, as well as a minimal increase for the general wage adjustment. On the revenue side, we're looking at a $25 parking permit increase, which will generate about $32,000. And potentially, we're looking at a places-for-eating tax, which is expected to generate about $510,000. We're expecting about $35,000 in video gaming. And then we're also looking at eliminating the dog license program, which will, you know, we'll see a reduction of almost $200 in revenues. So that sort of summarizes the general fund. There's a series of other funds that are more like savings accounts. So the general fund is the account where you want to make sure that the amount that goes in and the amount that go out are pretty close to the same. In these other funds, it will vary from year to year. And the main thing that we're concerned about is the bottom line, what we expect the ending balance to be. You can see these ending balances of these funds. The one I, a couple that I wanted to at least call your attention to is the EBST, the Employee Benefit Sick Time Fund. This fund exists just for accounting purposes, doesn't have any revenues or expenditures. So we only have a balance of $100 in there. And then the motor fuel tax fund has a balance of zero, and that's consistent with the way we generally budget it. That is, it's funded by revenue from the state, which has to be used for road improvements. And we have a lot of contracts with the state, a lot of grants with the state, where the state is providing the construction, and then we need to reimburse the state as they bill us. And so what we do is make sure that the money that we have, we identify the amount of money that's set aside to reimburse the state when they do bill us. And then the additional money that we have and extra revenue coming in this year is spent on road resurfacing. And so this year, we did the same thing where we identified all of our items. And we actually have a cash carryforward balance in the motor fuel tax fund of about 2.4 million. So we say we expect it to be zero at the end of the year. That's if everything is done and billed and we pay off everything. We really expect it will be higher than that. But we want to make sure we've covered all of our bases. So wanted to kind of hit some of the high points in some of the additional funds. The Convention Tourism Fund is funded by the hotel motel taxes. And some of the items that are included this year in the budget are funding for the Westmont Center, funding for special events, and the recovery of some staff costs for special events that have previously been in the general fund, items for community marketing, the Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber of Commerce additionally, so each year, we donate a specific amount. This year, we've only actually, they've only actually spent about half of what we planned to donate them. They were sort of holding off to see the financial state for the village and what we had available. And so we're potentially looking at carrying over the remainder of that dollar amount. That's something that's new to the board, that was not discussed at the last budget. Had some conversations with the Chamber of Commerce since our last budget workshop. And they called our attention to the fact that there's still a remainder of about $20,000 they've not spent from this year's amount. So we're planning to carry that over as long as the board has no issues with that. Additional items for community beautification and then downtown development grants. We currently have a pool of about $30,000 for downtown development grants, which include life safety grants as well as facade grants. Going forward, we'll be able to, we'll have to separate those two pools. And $15,000 will be for life safety grants that'll be funded from the general fund. And $15,000 will be funded from the Convention Tourism or the hotel motel tax funds. With the vehicle replacement program, it's funded by a transfer from the general fund. We're looking at replacing four patrol squads, some ambulances, street sweeper. And then additionally, there's additional carryover from patrol squad equipment that was not purchased this year that will have to be finalized next year. It's in the process of getting outfitted on the vehicles. But because we haven't received the vehicles with the equipment, we can't expense it till last year. This will not be a change to the funds carried forward. Worksheet, initially, when we had prepared that, we had estimated or expected that the full amount would be expensed in fiscal year 2013. And so now that we're going to do it in 2014, we simply said, "Well, we'll be carrying over additional cash." And so it will have no net impact over what you're anticipating. Capital Projects has several different items that are listed here that the boards discussed at previous meetings. Not going to take your time reading through all of them. But they're there that you're able to see. The water fund additionally had some carryovers of about $728,000 that are items that, like for funding of capital projects that they were anticipating to do in 2013. Turns out, they're not going to be able to finish paying for them until 2014. So we're going to be carrying those over. That will have a slight impact in the funds carried forward amount. We initially expected that we'd have about 1.5 million left over in that fund. It looks like we'll really have about 1.3 million left over. So slight change, but not a significant change. The other change from the last budget meeting, assuming the board is all right with this, is the plan to cap well number six. At the last board budget workshop, it was discussed and was determined that we could cap it, but there was no real need to at that time. We didn't need to worry about that, and so we decided not to do it. However, since that time, it's been determined that there's been a problem with that well now. And our choice is either to fix it or to cap it. And it will be cheaper to cap it. So now we are, assuming the board has no issue with it, planning to budget the $20,000 to cap that. There's also the plan to work on engineering for Comner and begin working on the North Hudson Water Main. The other item I neglected to mention was the increased cost of water. So we have an increase on both the expense as well as the revenue because of the anticipated cost increase from both the City of Chicago as well as the DuPage Water Commission, where we get our water.
And those increases are always passed through?
Yes. Yes, thank you. And then the final one, I just wanted to sort of show the board a chart that kind of shows the past history of our expenses and our revenues and our operating funds. So this includes the general fund, the IMRF FICA fund, which is based on our operating expenditures, as well as the vehicle replacement program, as those in the general fund used to be sort of merged and some of the revenues were sort of shared. I wanted to kind of get a full picture of including all of them. So you can see that, so first of all, the thing I want to point out is 2013, for both the revenues and the expenditures, are estimates at this point. Right now, our current amount of expenditures is about a million less. So we're really at right about 21 million in expenditures. So we're -- excuse me. So we're estimating that we may receive as much as another $1 million worth of expenditures that can be coded back to the prior year. So we're estimating we may be at 22 million. You'll see from the budget that last year, if you go through it and add all of the different funds up that are included in this, we had a budget of about 23 million. So we're actually about $1 million under budget this year. It was a little higher than in prior years because, as you'll recall, in 2012, we took a -- had a moratorium for vehicles. In 2013, we had to replace the vehicles that were due in 2012, as well as those that were due in 2013. So that was one of the reasons for the increase. The other reason that the increase looks so much is that in 2011, 2012, again, we were under budget, and it was a situation where departments are very conscientious and watch the budget. And there is definitely the mentality of if we don't need to spend it, we're going to hold off. And it's mentality that's very good, that, you know, just because it's budget doesn't mean it's spent. It's only spent if it's needed to be spent. And departments have been very diligent at watching their costs and holding off on costs that don't need to be done. Any questions at the moment?
I just have two comments. One, so that people understand that this was a difficult process. We are working on a shoestring. There's -- there was a lot of time spent about how close we got to laying off employees. And it wasn't like, well, maybe we'll have to. We were this close. When you're that close to affecting the staff that work so hard and have forcing people to make life changes, you have to take a long look at the fact that, okay, it's balanced, and, you know, life goes on. You've got to remember, this is without a lot of things that we would have liked to have had. It's pretty bare bones. And the other thing is that it also includes, so that nobody is disillusioned, it includes a half a million dollars that we don't have the guarantee yet of getting. And we are hoping that our budget is not half a million dollars already in the red. And that, as you saw that Spencer explained, was the places for eating tax. A lot of towns do it. It's a 1% additional sales tax on places that serve food. And we viewed that since there were no complaints about the general sales tax that was in effect during home rule, that we had to get rid of, that we had to make up that money some way. And non-home rule communities can put a tax on, and some communities do it much higher, places that serve food. And that doesn't mean packaged goods like grocery stores. It's for consumption on the premises. So that will have to pass and be enacted by the new board in order to keep this budget from being half a million dollars short. So just so people realize that we're not quite there yet.
No, we're not. And just to kind of piggyback off of that, you know, we felt it was very important to retain staff. I mean, we have a staff in this village that for the past several years have taken furlough days, six a year. They've had wage freezes. In some cases, they've given money back, taken cuts. And, you know, they've done a lot, a lot of work with no spending. They've cut, 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 cut. They've done more with less. So we managed, and we're glad that it did not come to that. The flip side of that is, we will not be replacing retirees. For this year, we have people that will be retiring, and those positions will remain unfilled. So again, it's going to put more burden on the remaining staff. So it's not a cakewalk. It's far from it. And I applaud every single employee in this village because our spending has been zilch. And I just, once again, want to say thank you to our staff and to all of our employees.
I just wanted to comment, certainly because of the attrition opportunity, we were able to avoid layoffs. And we will be doing some reorganization and asking people to do some slightly different things than in the past. But we've been in that mode for a number of years now. Most of the communities have been in that mode. It's something we learn to adapt to, and I'm confident that our staff will continue to rise the occasion. We did, you know, have furlough time for about three years, and, you know, there are many people on our staff who despite, you know, we're only getting compensated for 39 hours a week, they continue to put in, you know, work hours that were well beyond what they're being compensated for. Many of those folks work in this building and in the various departments here. And I'd like to thank them for their continued dedication despite that. And, you know, we do see it as an opportunity to improve and return to a level of service for the community, to get back to those 40 hours a week. And we thank the board for that opportunity and having that approved in the budget.
TSA could have learned a lot from Westmont employees.
State of Illinois could probably learn.
And I think the biggest thing is that the public needs to also know, we actually took some steps in this budget to see to it that you have the proper police protection, the proper fire protection, as well as upgrading it somewhat from what it used to be in the past. My fellow trustee, Suzanne Seneca, we've been together for quite a while, and I can honestly say that this has probably been the toughest budget that I've ever had to deal with. And we are just -- we are so glad that we did not have to lose any employees. It's the last thing that we wanted to do. Because you have to understand, this village is like a big family. And the last thing you want to do is hurt your family. Unfortunately, some decisions had to be made that, yeah, it's going to hurt a little bit in some cases, but I think the people of this town will survive. I don't think it's going to be a case that it's going to put undue burden on anyone. The services that they'll still receive will be more than what a lot of villages and towns offer. So going forward, you see your village workers out there. Wave to them, smile to them, because trust me, I've seen the water department guys, when these mains break, middle of the winter, and it's five below, guess what? They're out there standing in that water and getting that main fixed so your water continues to flow. I mean, these guys are on call 24/7 in those cases. Public Works Department, they're doubling up and working as hard as they possibly can. So you see them, wave to them and smile, because they work hard for this town and for the people and the residents of this town. And going forward, you know what? Do the best you can and keep pushing. That's all I can say.
It may seem like we give a lot of accolades to the village staff, but we probably see more what they do than the average resident does.
Yeah.
And we see the dedication that they give above and beyond, continuously, day in and day out.
Yep.
And so what Lee said and what Sue said is absolutely right. If you see them, give them a wave, because they're putting an awful lot of time and effort to make sure that this continue -- village continues to run as smooth as it can.
Yeah. And, you know, something I'd like to revisit, Ron, at a future date. I know about a year ago, we had each department come in and do a brief presentation of the function of each of their areas. And I think particularly with new board members, it would be a good exercise to go through. And again, for just for the village to see what their staff, because they're also your staff, are out there doing for all of us. So I think that would be a good thing to plan at a future date.
Sure. We're actually planning an abbreviated version of that for a special admin finance committee meeting for the new elected officials.
Oh, good.
But we can certainly resurrect a more expanded version of that and do that again for the general public. There's one thing I will mention, I'm probably going to regret this. But we had a meeting this week, myself, the finance director, the public works director, and we came up with an idea. And we still need to investigate it, but we may be able to actually restore, if not enhance, the brush pickup program with no cost to the village. We're in the process of investigating that right now.
Hang that little teaser out there.
I'm going to hang the teaser out there. I may regret bringing it up, but I know that's an important service to this community. And historically, it's seen as one that differentiates us from a lot of our neighbors. I don't know if the finance director would agree with me, but I came away from that meeting feeling like we may have a real opportunity to come forward in the near future here with some -- an idea for you guys to consider.
We'll look forward to that.
Would you?
I think it would be great if it ends up working out, yeah. It would be good.
So we're working on that.
Really?
We're continuing to look at every way we possibly can to, you know, continue to save money or restore some things that we can't do as well.
Excellent. Anything? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jenny.
The only thing I wanted to add is that, you know, we know the people out on the street, what they're doing, but the man sitting to my right puts in a tremendous amount of hours that nobody knows about. He's here till late, comes in early. And if you've never worked with him, he is a wonderful person to work with.
Thank you.
It's true.
Yeah. Let's hear it go on, Sue. We totally impressed.
Been here a long time, and I've very much enjoyed the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on our budget in the presentation that we just gave? Or have any questions perhaps? Okay. Any further comments from the board?
I would just like to add a thank you to the board for all the time and effort that I know that you spent on these, coming to the meetings and looking at all the numbers and all the time and effort that the board spent on this. Want to also thank the public that did attend. I know we had some members of the public at some of the budget workshops. We're grateful for that and for the members of the public that stayed to listen to this presentation. And also to, you know, to the finance staff that helped put all this together, especially Tim Carlson, who's been to all these meetings. To all the staff and all the departments that have worked so tirelessly to make this budget work and to, especially to Ron Searle, Village Manager, for all of his time and effort in putting the budget together. So a big thank you to everyone for this thing. It's a big project done by a lot of people.
And let us not forget Jen Ziblis, who kept the snacks supplied so that we could hit the vending machine for lunch and on our marathon meetings.
I do have to tell you, God got me back for not being able to attend the very last meeting because I -- my baby cousins came in. I promised to take them to a hockey game. So my 11-year-old baby cousin was so excited that instead of being here at the budget meeting, he was in my car and threw up all over the inside. So I looked at the clock and I went, given the choice, I should have been at the budget meeting.
That'll teach you.
That'll teach you. So our budget will officially be on for Monday and some of the official last business for some of you. So, okay, moving on to new business. 101 North Washington Street, Secula variance approval requests. Board to consider ordinances approving the following requests from Lane Secula for building additions in the R3 single-family detached residential district. Number one, zoning code variance to allow the construction of a front porch with an existing non-conforming front yard setback. And number two, zoning code variance to allow the construction of a rear addition with an existing non-conforming setback in a side yard adjoining a street. Hi.
Hi. I was here a few weeks ago and sort of said my piece. I just recently purchased the home.
Could you just state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lane Secula.
Thank you.
A lot of it will be a repeat of what I said last time, but I have lived a lot of places. I've lived in New York. I've lived in Chicago for eight years. I've lived in Oak Park most recently for seven years. And my mother, her cancer had advanced, and so I've come back here to care for her as of May. And the house just happened to come up for sale, and it was a great opportunity for me, so I purchased the home. My family's been in this town for a very long time. I grew up here. My mother grew up here. My grandparents had the home and her family forever. And when my mom passes, the home on 120 North Grant Street will be my brother's. So we plan on staying here a long time, and no place really felt like home to me except for Westmont. And so I was happy to purchase the home. Unfortunately, it is one of very few homes in Westmont that is placed diagonally on the lot. It's a beautiful lot. It's a double lot.
My favorite house. I love that house.
So do I. When I was -- and I said this last time, when I was a kid and I would ride my bike throughout this entire town, that's all we did. No helmet. All -- kids wear helmets now, but not us. I still have stones in my arm from falling off many bikes. I used to see Mr. Spurling sitting in that house every single night in the summer, and I would say, if that house ever goes up for sale, and I was a little kid, and I would say, I love that house. And sure enough, it came up for sale, and I had the opportunity and fortunate circumstance to purchase it. Unfortunately, I was looking forward to showing the house to the Spurlings, but they recently passed away, January, March. So I was not able to -- not his son, but the two elderly.
Yeah, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, they just passed away. So it's kind of sad. Their son, Aaron Spurling, actually was here last time to say a few words. My builder's not with me tonight, but we went in pretty good detail last time about it. I need to obviously make improvements to the house. They purchased the house in 1952. They never made any renovations to it in order to bring it up to, you know, a comfortable living place for myself. And it'll also improve the property value, as well as the property value of the neighbors and everyone around. I really like the changes that are being made in this town. As I mentioned, I grew up here, so I've seen it sort of come up. Most recently, the survey that you guys did on the site was very nice. Actually, participated in that. And a lot of the pictures were actually for places where I used to live, so that was kind of interesting, too. And also towns that did benefit from TIFs. So I decided to invest my money here. I think it's going to be a better place in the future, and I look forward to being a part of those changes. Last time, they approved me, and I'm sure they recommended my approval here, and I'm hoping that you allow this to proceed.
Thank you. Yes, it was a unanimous vote by the planning and zoning.
Okay.
Board questions, comments?
Thanks for making the improvements.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? I remember having many conversations with Mr. Spurling on his front porch about every two years.
Wonderful. He was a wonderful man.
Yeah.
My grandparents actually knew them, which is kind of wonderful.
Very nice people. Very nice people. Well, welcome back to Westmont. I wish it was under a happier circumstance, but we're happy to have you back.
Thank you.
And I just live a little east of you.
She's a neighbor.
So you'll see me walk.
Oh, good.
Don't call the police.
She's not casing the neighborhood or anything.
This is a woman snooping around.
She's not snooping or casing. She just walks a lot.
If she's looking in your windows, she just wants to see the upgrade. She's not.
You're welcome to see it when it's done. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be on for Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, 128 South Cass Avenue, the Barbershop Special Use. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from Crystal Pacheco, I believe, of the barbershop to allow the operation of a barbershop on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. And you must be Crystal.
Yes, I am. It's Crystal. It's Pacheco. Close.
Checo.
Yeah.
Pacheco?
Yeah, Pacheco.
Thank you.
It's missing a C.
Like I said before, I mean, I've lived in Westmont my whole life. My kids go to Manning. You know, I've always participated in several different events in Westmont. The barbershop's been in business since 2010. Been in that location for, you know, quite a while. So what happened was, back in December, it was agreed upon with the landlord that the new lease was to be put in my name as of January 1st. So what I did, I came to the village, filled out the renewal form to -- for the business license, put it in my name, so there was no lapse. I paid the $50 fee, received the license in the mail. 12 weeks later, I was contacted by the village and told there was a mistake and that I needed to fill out a new application instead of the renewal. I paid the $350 fee, went through the planning and zoning meeting. They approved it, so that's why I'm here today.
This is just sort of housekeeping cleanup.
Yeah.
We're happy to have you.
Thanks.
Any questions from the board?
Crystal, are you going to keep it as called the Barbershop?
Oh, yeah.
My husband gets his haircut there, and I got to tell you, you're the only person I know that, from what he tells me, can pretty much talk as much as he can.
Yeah.
You give him good haircuts, though.
Oh, thanks.
Very good. And didn't you volunteer at the St. Paul Drake?
Yes, I did.
I saw you there.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for doing that.
They did really good. They raised a lot of money for a first-time event.
It was great.
Mm-hmm.
It's great, especially for bad weather.
It was freezing.
Yes, it was freezing.
It was cold shaving heads.
Little scissors and shavers were going really fast.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Just one comment. There's two ordinances on the agenda. The way it's worded now, we've drafted them as a single ordinance because they're combined, so I'm just going to change the agenda.
Okay.
Approval of an ordinance. And same with the previous item, the two variances are related. I didn't hear any problems. We draft to that as one ordinance.
Okay. Sounds good. Great. You'll be on for Monday. Thank you.
Thanks.
Revisions to the Village of Westmont Municipal Code. Board to consider an ordinance revising Article 2 Fire Department, Section 42-31, created composition of the Village of -- I'm sorry, of the Westmont Fire Department. And we have our chief, our esteemed chief.
Yeah, thank you. I think I'll turn it over to John, because he has some additions to this. But before I let you do that, the reason for this is that we had been at 110 for many years, which just includes our emergency management personnel. And we only had 35, and we had a bunch of applications come in where residents wanted to become members of EMA. And we really wanted to add them to enhance our volunteers and that group. So that's why we're here today, to increase that to that number, to get up to 50 EMA
The only other change, which wasn't part of your write-up in your board packet, but was something that had been discussed internally with staff, is over the past couple of years, IMRF questioned some of the full-time administrative staff in the fire department. And they pointed to Section 42-32 of our code of ordinances, and it says, the fire chief, or it says, "All employees of the fire department are expected to help extinguish fires and perform other fire department duties." And we pointed out to IMRF, well, it may say that, but the job descriptions for our full-time administrative staff is actually different, and they're not out there extinguishing fires, and that we will amend our code. Well, I've drafted on the ordinances that were distributed to you, an amendment to that code section, which says it's the duty of every member of the fire department to extinguish fires except for the chief full-time administrative staff and emergency management agency personnel. That's correct.
Oh, darn.
No other comments?
Board comments, questions?
Um, is that enough of an increase, just to give yourself enough wiggle room, to, to bring the, the department's personnel up to 130, because it's been so long and that it's, you know, only 50 for EMA? If you get another wave, we certainly don't want to turn them away. So I just want to make sure you've got enough wiggle room without either having to turn people away from volunteering for EMA or having to come back before the board in order to do it, and, you know, that would take some time. So is that high enough?
Well, actually, right now, 80 is declared for the fire department size, and we've been operating with about 52 to 53.
Okay.
We were up to 62. And the next item, we'll be requesting to increase that number up to about 62, 63.
Okay.
And so we're still below that 80, and we think at that number, you know, 62 to 65 is comfortable for the part-time side.
Okay. What about, what about EMA for, at 50?
We, we're at 35 right now, and we have about seven or eight applications on file. Then the last two years, we've been very aggressive with recruiting EMA members, and we, we felt that it kind of slowed down some, and if we do another push, we may get a few more, but also on the side of, of not exceeding that 50 is, is the budget, because we, we supply them with equipment and some uniforms, and so we have to stay within that also.
Okay. All right. So if you're comfortable with that, okay. If you need to, if you, if you're not, speak now or forever.
I'm com, I'm comfortable with it, because we're, we're currently also looking at the current EMA members, and some of those are stepping away.
Okay. All right. Just checking.
Anything else? Public? This will be on also for Monday. You might want to stay right there.
Yes, I am.
Hiring freeze. Board to consider a motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze for the sole purpose of hiring up to 10 paid-on-call part-time firefighters, paramedics.
Yeah, we have identified that we thought we could operate with that lower number, but we had about six of our young guys get full-time jobs that used to work 12 to 15 shifts a month, now they're only working the minimum amount of shifts. So in the last six months, our data has shown that we've gone with a lot of open shifts, and it's time to add some personnel. We have also, just this last week, had our first firefighter, paramedic submit his letter to step away because their municipality passed an ordinance that their police and fire can't have a second badge or secondary employment with the same type of job. And currently, we believe that the negotiations going on in Naperville, that it's still on the table, that Naperville is also offering that same thing, but we don't know if it's going to be accepted or agreed upon.
Mm-hmm.
And we have six Naperville firefighter, paramedics that work for us, so we're, we're planning to make sure this ain't going to be a domino effect.
Right. And so, just so we're all clear, this doesn't change the budget, because you, you lost a bunch and might lose more. We need to fill those spots, and the, the pay's already been budgeted.
That, that's correct. There's no increase in the budget with requesting and doing this.
From what I hear, another town just did the same thing.
Yes.
Well, and that's, that's for liability purposes concerning workers' comp. They don't want somebody to get hurt somewhere else and then bring it to work in their town, and paranoia bounds, but.
Comments? Anybody? Anybody from the public? Okay. We will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anything under miscellaneous, so I will entertain the emotion unless, did you have something?
Well, I just have one thing, and then I'll move to adjourn, but I think this is the first meeting I've been at in four years that the police chief hasn't had podium time.
Tom, would you like to say anything?
No.
Come on, Lee.